We are live, thank you.
All right, thank you, if everybody can stand. Welcome everyone to the scheduled February meeting of Swan Hill Rural City Council. Welcome to councillors, officers, media, members of the gallery and those joining us on live stream. Swan Hill Rural City Council acknowledges the traditional custodians of the land on which we meet and pays its respects to their elders past and present. councillor McKay, the prayer please.
We beseech you, Lord, that we may be granted wisdom, understanding and sincerity of purpose in the decisions we are called on to make for the welfare of the people of the rural city of Swan Hill.
I'm in, please proceed it. Moving on to apologies and leaves of absence, we have an apology from councillor Kelly and councillor McPhee is on a leave of absence. Can I have somebody to move that please? Councillor Jeffrey, seconded, councillor McKay, all those in favour? Carry, thank you. Confirmation of minutes of the previous meeting were circulated with one correction that I was, I did attend the assembly on the 30th of January?
This meeting.
That's in this meeting? Oh, sorry, okay, gotcha, not for the previous one, sorry. Thank you. Confirmation of the minutes from the previous meeting, thank you. Move councillor McKay, seconded councillor Jeffrey, all in favour? Let's carry, thank you. Disclosures of conflict of interest, do we have any conflicts of interest? None? Sorry, I neglected to welcome the directors and officers present, so to my left, CEO Scott Barber, Director of Infrastructure Leah Johnson, Director of Development and Planning Michelle Granger and Director of Corporate Services Barn Pratap and Sharon Lidsley, Executive Officer, to my immediate right. Joint leaders and reading of petitions, Mr CEO.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, we have received a joint letter. It was submitted as a petition, but under the criteria of the Governance Rule, section 7.21, paragraph 2e, the petition must have names, addresses and original signatures of at least 10 people. So as that hasn't occurred in this instance, we'll consider this as a joint letter, Mr Mayor. And I put forward the recommendation that council receives this joint letter and asks the CEO to write a response. Mr Mayor.
Do we have a motion to that? Next then, move councillor Young, seconded, councillor Moore? All those in favour? Motion is carried, thank you. We have a motion that standing orders be suspended for public question time. Councillor Moore?
Can I ask a question relating to the letter or is it?
We've, we've moved on from that, sorry. Sorry, we don't get to. Moved councillor, standing orders be suspended? For public question time? Move councillor Moore, seconded councillor Jeffrey, those in favour? Carry, thank you. We have two public questions that have been submitted. The first one is from Nicholas Bennett and his question is, is it a conflict of interest for the mayor Stuart King to use his influence as mayor to support VHM's proposed mine at Laubert, given his personal hire business has already benefited and will most likely to continue to in the future? Given that question is to me, I will respond and thank Nicholas for his question. The Local Government Act 2020 has guidelines in part six, division two about conflict of interest and I personally take the subject of conflict of interest very seriously. I note that on occasions, both as a councillor and most recently as mayor, I've declared a conflict of interest in relation to several matters, including council funding and planning decisions. In my role as mayor, it is my responsibility to be the public voice of council decisions, whether I agree with council's position or not. It is appropriate therefore that the mayor is the signatory to council's EES submission in relation to the proposed VHM mine. Council's EES submission on the proposed VHM mine near Goshen has not provided unconditional support for that proposal, but rather has taken a balanced approach outlining both the positives and negatives of the proposal. I also note that council's submission is only one of 180 submissions made to the review panel. With respect to my business interests with VHM, Swan Hill Hire has never had, nor does it have any formal contract arrangements with VHM. I am happy to disclose that in the last financial years, last three financial years, my business's income from VHM has accounted for approximately 1% of gross revenue of Swan Hill Hire. Under section 129 of the Local Government Act 2020, it says, a conflict of interest does not arise, a, if, a, the conflict of interest is so remote or insignificant that it could not be reasonably regarded as capable of influencing the actions or decisions of the relevant person in relation to the matter. Whenever large projects or events are undertaken in our region, such as the Swan Hill Hospital Emergency Department, the Murray Downs Arm and Processing Facility, Countrywork Tennis or hopefully a future Swan Hill Bridge, there is a potential benefit for a large number of Swan Hill and district businesses. This not only includes building and construction businesses, but also accommodation providers, cafes and restaurants, other retailers and associated suppliers. Even the day-to-day regular activities in our municipality, for example domestic building construction and agriculture, benefit a large number of businesses. I believe that it is essential that elected representatives to council come from diverse backgrounds and experience, including local business experience. If a proposal generates economic benefit, then by definition the local economy benefits, which means local businesses in turn also benefit. Local business owners can provide value, discussion, debate and advocacy from just about any activity in our municipality for the overall benefit to the community. In the end, councillors are working towards the overall benefit of the community and that is my approach. We have another question from Nicholas Bennett, which reads, for Swan Hill Rural City Council to support VHM's proposed mine at Laubert, does it need to be unanimous or is it majority rule? Response from the CEO please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, thank you Nicholas for your question. Yes, it is a majority of votes, which means the majority of councillors present at the time of a voting, vote in favour of a matter put forward, thank you.
Thank you, Mr CEO. Can I have a motion that standing orders now be resumed? Councillor Moore, councillor Jeffrey, those in favour? Carry, thank you. Officer reports for this, no, open forum, do we have any? No items for the open forum, thank you. Agenda item 2.1, planning application 85 Carini Street, Swan Hill, use of land for a container deposit scheme. Miss Granger, are you taking this one? Thank you.
May council, this is an application for use only, it's to use an industrial site with existing buildings on it. For the container deposit scheme, which has proved very popular in Victoria. However, this site is not appropriate because it's narrow and funky. It fronts onto a major industrial road and there's not the ability for vehicles to go in and out of the site in forward motion. And they're telling us that would occur at least two to three times a week, but more often if it's a popular site for disposal of cans and bottles. For every other reason, we would happily support this application, but the traffic and safety issues this poses means we're recommending refusal to council because we've been unable to get a negotiated outcome with the applicant.
Thank you, any questions? Councillor McKay?
Miss Granger, in your opinion, is it, is the layout of the site and the size that makes it not possible to get an entrance inside in and out?
Yeah, that's correct.
And for one direction?
Yes.
So no changes will particularly be able to alter that?
No, we actually asked about changing the size of the vehicles that were entering and exiting the site to see if that would solve the issue. But they actually, as part of their application, gave us some traffic swept paths and that showed that it wasn't possible.
Councillor Moore?
Under pedestrian access, was that considered? Thinking kids who are collecting, having trouble on their bike? There's no footpath anywhere there, with pedestrian access, like with young kids, considered the whole of this application by the applicants?
Not that I'm aware of and this would be the second site in Swan Hill for this type of view. So there's, there's already a site in Queen Street under Pecuput Access, which might be a bit safer from a pedestrian point of view than this particular site.
Thank you.
Would the council like to just restate the question for the audio please?
Oh, sorry, can you, sorry, can you restate the question for the audio? Thank you councillor Moore. Have you got it on now? Thank you.
The question was, has pedestrian access been conceded in this application?
Great, thank you. Loading new tricks we have with audio. Any other questions? If not?
I'll move, ask for the recommendation.
Thank you, move councillor Jeffrey, I have a second for that motion, seconded councillor Young. You speak for the motion?
Yeah, Bill. So as a councillor, very, very supportive of the container deposit scheme. You know, there's one operator in Swan Hill and they're doing quite well and it is pretty popular, which is great for with site in Victoria. But firstly, the site just isn't appropriate for this type of, for this type of setup as indicated on the plan. It is, you know, 100 metres from the big main, one of the biggest roundabouts in Swan Hill and the size of the truck, the length, the operation and the frequency of visitors, it's just gonna be chaotic if we were to approve it. Now, we already know Carini Street has a number of issues with, you know, big double trucks reversing into existing businesses there and just a safety factor around that. But to have that type of vehicle movement so close to a roundabout and opposite a major fuel depot straight across the road is just gonna be bad. So appreciate that the company want to set up in Swan Hill, it's just not the right side and fully encourage them to seek other industrial or commercial locations that are more appropriate to the business that are looking to take, thank you.
Thank you councillor Jeffrey, councillor Young, do you wish to speak?
Um, I just agree with everything that councillor Jeffrey just said, this is a...
Microphone please councillor.
This is a facility, sorry, this is a facility that we really need in town, but we, as has been said, we really don't need things that are gonna restrict traffic and cause difficulties, so yeah, I think we'll just wait and see what happens with the application that comes in now.
Thank you councillor Young, do I have anybody to speak against it? No, nobody to speak against the motion? If that's the case, I'm gonna put the... Oh, the, thank you. I'll put the motion to the, to the vote. As per, as per recommendation to refuse the, the planning permit, all those in favour of the motion? Motion is carried. Item number 2.2, the Swan Hill Rural City Council VHM EES Panel submission. Miss Granger again, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. We are seeking your endorsement to the submission council has made to the planning inquiry and panel for the EES for the Goshen Mineral Sands and Rare Earth Mine. As councils are aware, it was exhibited over Christmas, it was really short timeframe, so we weren't able to bring our full submission to you prior to lodging it. The submission is now a public document on Engage Victoria website along with 180 other submissions and we will move into the public hearings on this issue from the 25th of March through to the end of April and council's likely to be heard in the third week of the hearing. So we just seek that you endorse this submission.
Any questions councillors, councillor McKay?
Miss Granger?
Yeah, microphone please.
Thank you.
Miss Granger, for the benefit of the public, when is the hearing occurring? And I hope I haven't put you on the spot here.
The hearing, the location of the hearing hasn't been decided as yet. It will start on the 25th of March, it will here, will sit for four days per week. When it is sitting locally, it will be sitting in Swan Hill.
Very good, thank you, and I presume it would be online as well, available to people wanting to watch.
Hearing and it will always have a public gallery.
Yeah, great, thank you.
Any other questions councillors?
I'm happy to move the motion.
Thank you councillor McKay. Move as per recommendation?
Yes.
Thank you, I have a second for that motion, councillor Moore? Are you wish to speak in favour, speak for the motion?
Yes, I will, yes, I will. Our council in general has a memorandum of understanding with the, the proposed mine and in a, in a sense is broadly favourable towards the concept of the mine, but has engaged really strongly with the environmental impact process and I really wanna express my appreciation to the engineering and environmental and planning department who have worked really, really hard to look at the implications. I do understand how complex a piece of work this is. It's really, really, really very challenging and it's really, really important that we have a seat at the table through this process to ensure the best outcomes for our municipality in the long run. There are lots of implications of the, the potential mine with, transport is a major one that I'd like to acknowledge that the hard work and that we really need to ensure that we don't have any implications for our roads and there will be long-term implications of a mine if it goes forward. Also, any potential impacts of pollution of, you know, sound, dust, radiation, they all need to be looked at and I do, you know, the environmental impact, the environmental planning panels process is very thorough, so thank you for engaging at this level. The other area of great impact that we could potentially see is socio-economic that is included in this to an extent in regard to housing. And we do know that other areas with, you know, the impacts of large mines have suffered a great deal, had great impacts on housing available for the people who already live there, so we wanna work very productively to ensure there's enough housing should this go ahead. So, and also of course impacts on flora and fauna and we're also wanting to ensure that we've got good planning in place to, that we can do any remediation works that are needed are done. So thank you very much, I'd also like to express thanks to the Rail Freight Alliance for their submission in regard to largely transport issues. These are, they're big implications and hopefully potentially ways that we can lobby here for upgrades to various roads and also various rail services in our region, which we heartily support to ensure that we've got the road network and rail network to deal with these issues and that will be also beneficial for the community in the long run, so, thank you.
Thank you councillor McKay. Councillor Moore?
Okay, you are making, first I'd like to thank all the EDU staff and other staff that contributed to this and councillors that actually waded through these massive tomes that constituted the EES and to come up, to make, and to make recommendations to, to what came to us, to formulate what I think is a very considered and balanced statement in the end. Takes into account the personal, the council infrastructure and of course the environment which we are, we're all a part of and we need that balanced approach going forward. So I'm very happy with it because it is a balanced approach. It's not a, it's not a boots and all, all-in approach. We've actually, we've taken on board, I think nearly every aspect that you could possibly consider and thoroughly support this response that we've formulated, thank you.
Thank you councillor Moore, does anybody wish to speak against it? Sorry, I cut councillor Moore off early before, but does anybody else wanna speak in favour of the, of the motion? If, councillor Young?
I'd just like to say endorse what councillor McKay has said and also councillor Moore. I think there's far more benefits to be gained out of this project.
Sorry, can you have my microphone on? There's a lot more benefits to be gained out of this project than any other things that may happen during the whole process. And thank you to all the council for all the work that they've done and I think it's gonna be a huge benefit to our region.
Thank you councillor Young. No speakers against the motion, I'll now put the motion, all those in favour? Motion is carried, thank you. Agenda item 2.3, instrument of appointment and authorisation, Miss Granger again? Is that correct or was it CEO?
I can take it.
You take it, yeah.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. The authorisation, appointment of authorisation is to provide authorization to officers as listed in the report. We've listed a director, Michelle Granger, and manager to be Owis at City and we're asking them to be authorized officers, set out in the attachments under the Planning and Environmental Act of 1987.
Thank you, any questions councillors? If not? As per recommendation councillor Jeffrey? Seconded, councillor Moore? Councillor Jeffrey, do you wish to speak?
Just briefly for the, for the audience, this is our, given authorization under the planning, if I have an act to make, sign off on decisions on behalf of council, thank you.
Councillor Moore?
This is from our steeping formally welcoming Michelle and Owis to their job, this is the last step.
This is the last step in welcoming Michelle and Owis to the, to the fold so they can carry out their job fully. So welcome and we're looking forward to you spending many years in this council, carrying out and doing the jobs that are allocated to you. So yeah, this is like formalizes, formalizes the arrangement under the S5, the six and seven instruments of delegation, I assume it is and yes, welcome and all the best with it.
Thank you councillor Moore. Any speakers against the motion, anybody else wish to speak in favour of it? If not, we'll put the motion, all those in favour? The motion is carried. Item 2.4, consent to the closing of a road, Major Mitchell's Lagoon Road in Kenley. Miss Johnson?
Thank you, through you Mayor, this really is a procedural report. Council has received a request from the Department of Energy, Environment and Climate Action, which is also known as DECA, for council to consent to the closing of a crown road known as Major Mitchell's Lagoon Road. It is shown in your attachments in yellow. Development over the years by the adjoining landowner has resulted in significant encroachment of orchard plantings and even construction of a dwelling on the road reserve. DECA do have full responsibility for the road and are proposing to close portions of the road as well as sell remaining portions to the adjoining landowner. The road reserve is unmade and not accessible by vehicles for its full length. However, on paper, its original intention was to provide access to a site of historical significance known as Major Mitchell Lagoon Reserve. Currently, access to the historical site is by foot and this access will not be affected after closure of the road reserve. It is also noted that to ensure that lot CA35A, which is a small parcel that can be seen on the attachments, will not be landlocked after the closure as CA35 and CA35R A are to be consolidated. The process for the closing of the road has been carried out by DECA and apart from giving consent, council has no obligations or statutory requirements. It is recommended to council that this road reserve is not reasonably required as a road for public use now or into the future. Therefore, the recommendation is that council consent to closing of the road under section 349 of the Land Act 1958 for Major Mitchell's Lagoon Road on the condition that lots CA35 and CA35A are consolidated through the sale process. Thank you.
Thank you, any questions councillors? Councillor, councillor Moore?
Miss Johnson, it appears that part of the road is already closed, is that correct? Like it's shaded, it says it's shaded in yellow on one map, on the other map there's a cross hatching of yellow. So is it the entire length of that road, all the way around or is there parts of it already been closed?
Through you Mayor, parts of the road, well, it's all open at the moment but there's sections that will be closed and there'll be sections that will be sold to the adjoining property owner.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor McKay, you had a question?
Yes, it says in our report that once we, that there'll be community consultation, oh sorry, I've lost the, I'm in the wrong spot.
Councillor Moore?
Councillor Moore? Councillor Moore?
That DECA will undertake community consultation as required under the Lands Act. I'm presuming that they haven't done that yet and do we know what form that would take? And I don't know who to ask, Miss Johnson or Miss Granger?
Through you Mayor, obviously as indicated, council doesn't have a role to play in terms of what that communication strategy will look like, that is the responsibility of DECA. In terms of what it would look like, I would assume that it would be similar to council's processes, contacting adjoining property owners and probably advertising the local papers, I would assume. Yeah, does that answer your question?
Partly, are, are DECA able to go forward with that community consultation without our consent?
It's my understanding that they need our consent to be able to then start that process.
Okay. Thank you, that was what I wanted to understand.
Any other questions? Microphone?
Just to clarify that point there, DECA can't, absolutely cannot start community consultation unless we've given consent, like that has to happen first.
Through you Mayor, that is my understanding.
Okay, yeah, sorry. Thank you.
Thank you. If there's no other questions, could I have a motion, councillors? As per recommendation councillor Moore, seconded councillor Jeffrey? Councillor Moore, you wish to speak to the motion? Thank you.
I got it right that time. Fairly straightforward process, it appears any issues will be covered in the community consultation that DECA carries out. Probably not ideal as the sentiments have been expressed, that should, could possibly happen first, but that can't until we give consent. Other than that, access will still be there to the lagoon and I feel it'll tidy up a few loose ends in that area with infrastructure and, and the like. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Moore, councillor Jeffrey?
They'll support the recommendation, it is a grow on paper, not formed in any NMA such as a load and appreciate the growing, rapid growth of the, so far around the area that have potentially have encroached on some of that water. So I'm hoping to support and go through the process to see if the community consultation comes back with, just give life and access to the lagoon as well. But whatever I hope, it's, yeah, so not really a fatality, fatality to tell you there. So the outcome should be positive for the landline.
Thank you councillor Jeffrey, does anybody else wish to speak to the motion? If not, I'll put the...
I wanna speak against.
Oh, you'd like to speak, yeah, speak against the motion, sorry.
I'll speak against the motion, I do understand that as a procedural process and probably...
Sorry, I, thank you, I understand as a procedural process of, you know, governance it needs to be supported by the council before community consultation can happen, but I would like to express some concerns that I have that the, although we are in a way forced into supporting this so that it can go to community consultation, I am a bit concerned that it almost says that it's acceptable for private landholders to encroach on public or land and that there can be a benefit to that and I do not think that the council in a general sense should be supporting that practice and we do see it happening of encroachment onto roadsides at various times and it's difficult to understand those borders exactly. But the other parts that I'm concerned about is that, and that I'm speaking about this so that hopefully it's reported in the media and that people are well aware when the community consultation happens, is that we do need to understand in the long term if there are any implications for firefighting and access to that corner of the river and any implications of reducing access for the community. That area of land is a public park, crown land, it has been accessible for fishing, camping and recreation and tourism. So I do hope that the community will fully engage with the consultation project process when DECA has that and so that we, that DECA is fully aware of any potential negative implications as well as any positives, thank you.
Thank you councillor McKay. Motion? If not, I'll give councillor Moore the right of reply.
I think I've said enough, thanks, Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor Moore. I'll now put the motion, all those in favour of the motion? Those against? Motion is carried.
Microphones councillors?
Microphones, thanks councillors. Agenda item 2.5, Australian Local Government Association or ALGA as it's abbreviated to, conference, Mr CEO?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Every year, the Australian Local Government Association holds a conference in Canberra. It brings together more than 500 councils across Australia. It's the only gathering of its type. Swan Hill Rural City Council has participated in attending this conference a number of years. It's an opportunity to network, meet with other councils, hear a series of presenters, often in separate streams where we... It's an opportunity to network, meet with other councils, hear a series of presenters, often in separate streams where we can split up and, I guess, uh, pick up more information as a, as a council. And there's usually an opportunity to meet with politicians while in the nation's capital. I'll take the rest of the report as read and, uh, and our recommendation to the council is that, uh, authorize the, the mayor or delegate, the CEO or delegate or, and another councillor who I hope we could have someone, uh, named today, Mr Mayor or a delegate. The reason we've got a delegate in there is, um, sometimes life happens and if someone out of the representative group, if, if approved by council can't attend, we can get someone to attend and, and make sure that we participate if, again, if approved by council. Ask the councillors to endorse the attendance of the councillors who wish to attend at their own cost over and above dot point one. I ask the council to authorize councillor King or councillor King's delegate, if councillor King can't make it, to, um, exercise the rights of Swan Hill Rural City Council at the twenty twenty four National General Assembly to, to vote. So what will happen is, um, councils are given a, a voting pad and you attend and in, there's a number of motions that ALGA have put forward by different councils across Australia. The voting councillor can vote on behalf of council. And the last point, uh, we recommend that, uh, we request all participants to submit, uh, a, a report to, uh, share their learnings from the conference. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, Mr CEO. Any questions for the CEO in relation to this report? There's no questions. Can I have a mover? Move councillor McKay, seconda. Councillor Young? Can, sorry. Uh, yeah, sorry, just to clarify your motion, councillor McKay. Are you nominating the other councillor at this point in time?
No, I was, no, I was happy to leave it as, for a decision to be made later. We didn't nominate-
For a decision in the future?
Yes. I think we can not decide that amongst ourselves depending on what's convenient. Is everyone happy for that? Or do you want to nominate someone?
Throw that to you, please.
Uh, thanks, Mr Mayor. Thanks councillor McKay. I, I'd prefer if councillors could to choose their representative so we can start making arrangements and, and booking for, for the, uh, conference. Then usually, um, you'd need someone's name to do that if you can, but we can change it later.
Question?
Yes.
But don't have to send it on the council line. It's not mandatory, is that correct?
Uh, through, through the mayor, that is correct, councillor Jeffrey. Um, traditionally has been the mayor, uh, CEO and a councillor. But the, the council today can change that, of course. That's well within your right.
Did you have a question, councillor Young? No, no, no?
It's been coming out on my calendar saying, are you willing to attend? I've always said yes. I just wondered if other councillors were getting that too. It's in my calendar.
No. No, maybe it's a, maybe because you've been previously, it's a, um, pop-up reminder or something. Not sure. Not sure.
I would, I would like to attend as someone who will stand in it like next election.
So, um, councillor McKay, do you wish to stick with your original motion or do you wish to nominate the other councillor as, as part of your motion?
Um, I just, I guess I wish we'd had a discussion about this earlier and we could have made an agreement. Um, I'm happy to, I'd rather stick with it. As the CEO has said, he'd like someone to be nominated. I'm happy to go with that and I would be happy to go to the event. However, I don't want it to be difficult. I'll nominate myself. I'll nominate myself.
So the, so the part one of the motion would then read travel of the mayor, councillor Stuart King or delegate, CEO Scott Barber or delegate, and councillor McKay or delegate, um, and then the rest of the motion as, as per the recommendation? Councillor McKay?
Yeah.
Yes? Thank you.
So then councillor McKay goes.
That's, that's what she's, that's what she's moved.
Only if supported by discount.
So I'd need to know councillor Young whether you're willing to still second that motion?
No.
No?
I'll, I'll second.
You'll second it?
That's, I'll second the question that councillor, can I ask?
Thank you. So seconded by councillor Jeffrey. We clear? Clear what the motion is? Yes? Okay, thank you. Councillor McKay, you wish to speak to the motion?
Um, great. The ALGA concert, the ALGA conference is a very, very useful conference for councillors and the mayor and CEO to attend. Uh, we have local government representatives who are from right around the nation, but more importantly, there are, um, federal polit-, Commonwealth politicians and senators ready to hear the lobbying of the various councils and also present, uh, strategies and systems and ways for, that our councils can apply for funding and also speak for their people in the best way. So they give you guidance about the way the federal government is going to operate in relation to local governments in the area. So I did attend about five, four or five years ago. It was a great event. It was very interesting, learned a lot of things and a lot about the mechanics of government and how it works. So I think it's a very useful conference to go to. Um, and so for that reason, I put forward this motion.
Thank you, councillor McKay. Councillor Jeffrey?
Well, just briefly, uh, it's one of the two defects outside of Victoria that our council have attended annually. Uh, full of support and the package that our representatives take, whether I break with ministers and other councils has been particularly ministers over some of ICA projects has, has some really good benefits for all the fans and the things. Chris through the minister and get them up and running and hopefully this one's back. So, uh, really support the three representatives attending. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Jeffrey. Any speakers against the motion? Councillor Moore?
Not really I'd support this motion, but, uh, given that, uh, the ALGA conference will be less than ninety days or thereabouts, um, before we go into caretaker, probably little action could be taken. Um, nobody's guaranteed to be re-elected. Um, this, this particular year, I think, um, given that there's been a lot said around this table. A lot said around this table about, uh, our budget and saving money with the fact that we don't have a deputy mayor. Um, uh, is to save money. Um, in this particular case, in this particular year, I, I actually think we should just send the mayor and the CEO. Um, happy to say everyone else to go at their own expense. That's fine. Um, but at this point, um, I think we should, you know, given the circumstances, ninety days out from caretaker and leaving office and unknown whether any of us, any people, uh, any of the current councillors will be re-elected. Um, I think, uh, this point, that's, that's what we should be doing. Thank you, councillor King.
Thank you, councillor Moore. Do I have any other speakers, uh, for or against the motion? If not, uh, I will put the motion, so. Oh, sorry, right of, right of reply. Sorry, councillor McKay. Sorry.
It's okay.
Go, go, go ahead. You have the, you have the right of reply, um, as the mover of the motion.
Yeah, I thi-, I think that, um, it's beneficial to have a range of people attend these, um, conferences. Uh, I can speak to the issue that councillor Kelly attended last year and met, um, Minister King, the minister for infrastructure and had a meeting with her in person and presented our position about the bridge. It was an, a, a meeting that came up at, by chance, but she, um, spoke to the CEO and asked what was our position, asked for information and subsequently we received the funding for our bridge. So I do think that in spite of us all being different people and having, um, different opinions and perspectives that can offer a great deal to a conference such as this in that we present a great united front. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor McKay. Uh, with that said, I'll now put the motion. Those in favour of the motion? Those against? Motion is lost. Do I have an alternative motion? Councillor Moore?
I'll move that, um, we-
Microphone, thank you.
Uh, move that council authorised the travel of the mayor, councillor Stuart King or delegate, chief executive officer Scott Barber or delegate and one other, um, and full stop there. Um, council will support the related cost for attendance. To endorse the attendance of additional councils who wish to attend at their own cost, uh, authorize councillor King or delegate to exercise the voting rights of the Swan Hill Rural City Council at the twenty three National General, twenty four, I should think that should be.
Twenty four, yes.
National General Assembly and request all participat-, participants to submit reports to council upon return from the conference.
Got that. Sharon, Sharon's got that. Do I have a second for that motion? Seconded councillor Jeffrey. Councillor Moore, do you wish to speak to that motion?
Oh, I'd be just repeating, um, what I said before. Um, we're not precluding another councillor going, just as long as they go at their own expense and, um, can bring back, uh, and run, give us a report on, on what happens there. Um, as I said, I've been myself and it is very informative. Uh, but as I might be standing again, um, and, uh, so also that, uh, the unsureness about being re-elected, I think it's a proper course to take at this point in time. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Moore. Councillor Jeffrey, do you wish to speak?
Uh, thank you. I'll support sentence. I like it. I would have been still, I'll support the sentence of councillor at our expense, um, often without, without a caretaker vote at the top line. And the councils are still being counseled on behalf of our council. So I would have supported, um, the council government vote, but read out the votes are going to go. So perhaps we'll support the motion put forward by councillor Moore, just have the mayor and the CEO attend the conference. Thank you.
Thank you. Any speakers against the motion? Councillor McKay?
Um, having been at the ALGA conference, I can absolutely, um, say that there are too many things for simply two people to go to. There are meetings that are held concurrently. There are sessions that are, are held concurrently as councillor Moore would be well aware. When we attended the meeting, the conference together, we both chose to go to different events and therefore could try to gather the most information that was available. And so I think it's probably not the best outcome to have only one person go because there are simply too many things on. There are too many presentations, too many speakers and too many sessions. We had a session about infrastructure that had all the people of the major and I was the only one who went at that at the time. So for that reason, just for a purely practical sense, I think it's good to have someone there who's, uh, two people, three people are able to go to everything that's on at the time. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor McKay. Any other speakers for or against the motion? No, if there's no, uh, further speakers, councillor Moore, would you like to give you the right of reply? Thank you, councillor Moore. Uh, I'll now put the motion. I'm assuming that's on the top of the screen. Sorry, Sharon. Just that we're clear on what we're voting on, that's all. Sorry, Sharon, put you on the spot. Thank you. So that's the, that's the motion that's been, that we'll be, be putting. All those in favour of the motion? Those against? Motion is carried. Item two point six. Potential visitor, excuse me, potential visit of Her Excellency, the Governor of Victoria. Mr Barber?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Uh, on the seventeenth of January, council received, uh, an email from the aid to, uh, Her Excellency, the Governor of Victoria, Professor of the Honourable Margaret Gardner to, uh, host, uh, a visit from, uh, Her Excellency. Um, what I'm asking basically of councillors is do we want to host Her Excellency, uh, for the second or third of May? What will happen if we do, uh, accept is we provide some suggestions of places where Her Excellency can visit and people to meet. And then we usually put together a, a, a suggested agenda of, uh, civic reception, dinners, meetings, visits to the Pinnies Settlement or to locations at Robbenvaugh, for example. It's up to the aid of, of Her Excellency to decide what they will or won't do, but we would be giving them a nu-, number of ideas and we'd be consulting with the councillors at that time. Uh, we've spoken with, um, uh, Goldfields, uh, council about their experience. So Goldfields Shire Council hosted Her Excellency in October last year and, uh, we're going to, uh, share information there. The financial implication councillors, we've put in a range of ten to twenty thousand dollars. That's including staff time and that number could vary depending on what, uh, Her Excellency actually will want to do. It's just a guide. So, uh, we know these things aren't necessarily for free. There is a cost to ratepayers. The benefits will be, um, many people get to meet this person. Her Excellency has a background of infrastructure and academia and it builds or helps with links between us and the state government in a different way. Um, I ask the councillors to consider the recommendation as written. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, CEO. Any questions for the CEO, councillors? If there's no questions, can I ask for a motion, please? Councillor McKay?
I'll move the motion as recommended.
As per recommendation?
Yeah.
Which is to accept, to, accept to host?
Yes.
Do I have a second for that motion? Councillor Young? Councillor McKay, you wish to speak to the motion?
Uh, yes, I, um, reiterate what our CEO, Scott, said in that she is a very, very esteemed and recognised woman of great intellect, but also a credible amount of public service to, um, the higher education sector and also infrastructure serves, served as the head of many, um, government organisations and also, as I said, in the field of higher education, gender equity and variety of very, very significant roles that will have mean that she's hugely, um, useful to have her aware and understanding of the area, this area of Northern Victoria. So what our issues are in regard to higher education, our needs in regard to health and, and what impact we have in regard to agriculture and our huge output, um, the significance of First Nations people in our region. It's just, uh, I think it would be a very beneficial thing and also to improve links with our state government. It's always good. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor McKay. Councillor Young?
Yeah, so I just, um, love to say, I think the, the last visit that we had from the governor gave us a lot of exposure to, um, the different areas by taking it to many of the attractions that we've got here and particularly up into Robbenvaugh as well. Um, and endorse what councillor, uh, McKay has just said. And I think it's a great opportunity for the Swan Hill.
Thank you, councillor Young. Any other speakers for or against? Councillor Moore?
Uh, thank you, Mayor King. Yeah, yeah, as councillor Young has just said, uh, in previous occasions when Linda De Salle came, it was, uh, a fantastic experience for councillors and, um, an opportunity to educate, uh, so to speak. Um, it's reverse education here because I see, um, uh, the governor, um, Margaret Gardner is a basically a lifetime academic and spent her time in institutions most of her life. Um, and to get out and see, uh, what happens out here in rural areas away from the, the institutions and, uh, and promote, uh, what we do best here. And, um, that is our agriculture and agricultural base which, you know, I keep hanging on, banging on about it, you know, one, uh, billion dollars at least contribution to the state and federal economies. So, and it's, uh, and it's great for, we get a lot of exposure from that and, and promotion and, you know, understanding and bridging that city-country divide, um, which is too much of. So, uh, no, um, uh, happy to endorse, um, this recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Moore. Any other speakers? No further speakers? No speakers against? So I'll put the motion. All those in favour? Motion is carried. Thank you. Item two point seven, quarterly review of financial performance and financial position to the thirty first of December, twenty twenty three. Mr Patel?
Thank you, uh, Mr Mayor and councillors. Uh, this, uh, report, uh, is, uh, financial performance and financial position to thirty first of, uh, December twenty twenty three. A summary statement of, uh, income and expenditure and summarized balance sheet for six months and the thirty first of December is, uh, attached on page, uh, two, three, three and page two, three, five. The forecast result is expected to be better than, uh, the budget at this stage of the financial year. The predicted surplus assumes that the major projects and capital works for the remainder of the financial year will be within the budget. The, uh, there are some unfavorable variances. I'll go through that, Mr Mayor. Statutory fee and fines, a hundred seventy two thousand unfavorable. Uh, building and planning permits are below forecast and expected to remain as such for the remainder of the year. The livestock exchange user fee, uh, two hundred and seventeen thousand unfavorable. A reduced number of stock passing through the exchange this financial year. The, uh, contract payments and materials and services, hundred and twenty three thousand unfavorable due to invoicing delays. Additional cleaning costs were paid in the current financial year. So last year's, uh, cleaning, uh, fee invoice was received in this financial year. Therefore, it was paid out of this year's budget. The software licenses, uh, ten, nineteen thousand five hundred unfavorable. Microsoft annual licence subscription exceeded forecast by nine percent. The work cover premiums unfavorable by twenty one, five, one, five. Premiums for twenty twenty three, twenty four year are above forecast due to a M and Premiums for 2023, 24 year are above forecast due to a MAV annual contribution payment. And then the safety ISO audit, we conducted an audit at the depot, which has caused our variance to be unfavorable by 10,600. The next page, Mr Mayor, the capital works noting, noting road drainage project was undertaken next financial year with the, was supposed to be taken next financial year with a budget of 430. The alternate solution was provided, brought forward and will be completed at the significant savings. So there has been a variance of 65,000 unfavorable. Pentle Island Bridge, unfavorable variance of 90,000. Again, the concept and cost structure report to 369,000. So we had to do that so that we could apply for the grant of 369,000. This report shows the predicted termination result of 1,308,774 dollars above the budgeted surplus of 2023, 24 financial year. This is an indicative figure. The final figures will not be known until the end of the financial year and the statements after the audit by the Victorian Audit Office. For the, the recommendation, Mr Mayor, that the council note that the anticipated end of the financial year result is 1308774, better than the appropriate budget surplus of 79038 at this stage. Note the CEO's statement that a revised budget is not required for the 23, 24 financial year. So that's the report, Mr Mayor. Have you any questions?
Thank you, Mr Pata. Any questions, councillors? Now, other councillors got questions? I've got one question, Mr Pata.
Just with regards to building and planning permits. Obviously, we're unable to offer issuing building permits because we don't have a building survey within our staff ranks. Do we, do we get anything from the, from those permits that are approved by the, by the private sector? Like, I know they notify council of, of permits coming up. Is there any, is there any payment that comes through from, from those or not?
Yes.
Yes, yes, that's fine.
Yeah, through you, Mayor. We receive a nominal 30 dollar lodgment fee per building permit issued by a private building survey.
Thank you. Councillor Moore?
Mr Pata, Grants Commission Financial Assistance Grants, in brackets, including transfer from reserve. How much was the transfer from reserve in that 679136 figure?
There's a favorable, favorable variance reported, councillor Moore, spare with me, the 679136. So the full financial assistance grant was 679136, higher than the budgeted grant.
Okay. What's the including transfer from reserve? What does that actually?
That was the one that was received in the last financial year. I am not sure of the exact numbers, but I'll take that notice and provide that by you, Mayor.
If there's no other questions, councillors, can I have a motion? Councillor Jeffrey?
I'll move as per recommendation.
Thank you. Thank you. Seconder? Councillor Young? Thank you. Councillor Jeffrey, do you wish to speak to the motion?
Thank you. So it's good to say that we're in a favorable position for our budget. And this is the 2023, 24 budget. But I don't know, we recently just reported on another, a million dollars for the previous one actually, but it is worth pointing out that the top two items being the Grant Commission for financial assistance and the 2023 other payment make up 1,36,014 dollars. So that, where councillors receive assistance from state government and their formulas change, they tweak it, they do whatever they want to do, then they tell us how much we get. So it's really hard to budget. So this is financial assistance to the council to perform, to take a range of projects. That is what it's led to, to start over a million dollars of the favorable budget. Apart from that, we'd only be, you know, just under 300,000 dollars in a favorable position. So it's worth noting out that we're not, like, the council plan a budget to what we think we're going to get. Some of those factors which are ahead of our control, we can estimate, can come in and blow us out of the water at some point, which has happened to you. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Jeffrey. Councillor Young? Do you wish to speak?
I'd just like to say thank you to Ashfree and everyone that's worked on this budget and bond for his work. It's just great to see a budget that's got such a big surplus rather than anyone that's got a bit deficit. So well done to everybody involved. Thank you.
Any other speakers? Councillor Moore?
It is great news that we are actually, it is great news that we're actually in surplus, but there is a couple of red flags within this report and that is that in an operational sense, it's still underwater by about 400,000. We're actually quite lucky to get these grants that have come in or have been underpaid in interest income that have come in that possibly, if it weren't budgeted on, that may not happen next year. So what I'm saying is, in an operational sense, you know, probably it's, you know, there's good and bad news in this. You know, overall, it's great news, but, you know, we've actually, in an operational sense, you know, we're, we're behind it a long way and probably very lucky to be kind of behind a little bit because we haven't been able to fill a lot of our employee positions, which is another 300,000 surplus from, from not having enough staff to do the, to do the jobs when you need to do adequately. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Moore. Anybody else wish to speak to the motion? If not, I shall put the motion. All those in favour? Those against? Motion is carried. Moving on to officer reports for noting. Item 3.1, major project plan quarterly reporting, ending the 31st of December 2023. Mr Barber?
That's, sorry, that's the corporate service.
Corporate service, sorry.
Yep.
Sorry, Mr Pata. Sorry, thank you.
Mr Mayor, this report presents, presented as for noting only. The quarterly report on the PMO. The total projects that we managed during this quarter was 14. Five out of the 14 was, 14 was completed during this quarter. Mr Mayor, the total value of the completed project is 323 million. That was within the last three months of this financial year. There are project exception report on page 237 of the agenda. Robinvale Leisure Centre, the expansion, Robinvale Leisure Centre expansion. The project is currently behind schedule due to change in scope, compliance check and approvals, and there is one percent risk to the budget, Robinvale Playground. The project is currently behind schedule. The project sponsor is collaborating closely with the designers and estimators to ensure the best possible outcome for the community. The boardwork and viewing platform, Monash Drive. This project has experienced significant delays from inception of this project in September 2018, mainly due to the procurement of the suitable contractor, elevated river levels and so on. This delays, last paragraph, last sentence, Mr Mayor. The delays stem from various factors, including design complexities, material shortage, fluctuation in the river water level, weather-related obstacles and prior commitment of the contractor. The Robinvale Leisure Centre's skate park, this project is now completed but exceeded the budget by four percent due to misleading information on the existing service brand. The revitalization of Nia West Shopping Precinct. This project is currently behind schedule due to multiple consultation sessions and priorities exceeding the budget. The project team is working on finalizing the design and planning the procurement works. The list of projects, the photographs are on page 25, 238, 239 and 232, 240. The list of projects, the spreadsheet is attached on page 251 and 252. That's the report, Mr Mayor. I'm happy to make questions.
Thank you, Mr Pata.
The council received the report.
Thank you. Any questions, councillors? I'll have one, Mr Pata, just on the, for the benefit of our Robbenvale people on the, on the live stream. The, my understanding is that the Robbenvale Playground, when it, when that project kicks off and is completed, that that will cater for some additional shade and infrastructure around the recently completed Robbenvale Skate Park. Can you just confirm that for me?
Yes, good.
Thank you very much. If there's no other questions, can I have a motion, please, councillors? As per recommendation, councillor Moore, thank you. Seconder? Councillor Young? Thank you. Councillor Moore, do you wish to speak?
I'll just briefly, this, this report, this quarterly is a great report and to keep the public abreast of what council's actually doing and where your ratepayers are going. And all the, in a lot of cases, livability issues that we've been attempting to address over a long period of time now. So that's a great report and a great update that comes out of the report. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Moore. Councillor Young?
I think probably the report actually speaks for itself with all the different things that have been done. Some of the doors what council rules it and I'd say I'm quite happy to see that motion passed.
Thank you, councillor Young. Anybody else wish to speak to the motion?
Oh, just very briefly.
Councillor McKay?
Just very briefly, I'd like to thank all the council staff who have worked on these projects. Many of them are about livability and improved experiences for the children, the people in the communities of the region. I also like to acknowledge there are a couple of people from Nia Community in our gallery who are also recognizing their work, but also that how much the community is appreciating the Nia West footpath that's linking the aged care home with the town. And I hear that's being used greatly and much appreciated, but also how much people are looking forward to the renewals in the shopping precincts in St. Park. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor McKay. There's no other, no other speakers. I'll put the motion. Those in favour of the motion? Motion is carried. Thank you. Just clarifying the next item. So the 3.2 is the Audit and Risk Committee meetings, meeting minutes from the 7th of December 2023. They have been circulated, but they are confidential minutes, councillors, so we won't be taking questions regarding the minutes per se unless anybody wishes to, in which case we'll need to go into camera in, later in the meeting. So if there's no questions, could I have somebody to move that we know the contents of the Audit and Risk Committee report? Move councillor Jeffrey? Seconded? Councillor Moore? Thank you. All those in, all those in favour of the motion? Motion's carried. Thank you. Decisions which need action and ratification. 4.1, sign and seal report. Mr CEO?
As written, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. Any questions, councillors? If not, can I have a motion? Councillor Jeffrey? Thank you. Seconder? Councillor McKay? Thank you. Procedural, thank you. Those in favour of the motion? Motion's carried. 4.2, council assemblies record of attendance and agenda items. Report is there for noting. No questions. Can I have somebody to move? Sorry. Sorry, there was an amendment. Sorry. I was getting confused earlier on. So there is an amendment to the 30th of January that I wasn't in apology. I actually was in attendance for that councillor assembly. That's the only change there. Councillor Jeffrey? Move? Thank you. Seconder? Councillor Moore? Procedural, thank you. All those in favour? Motion's carried. Thank you. Moving on, we have no notices of motion. Does have any foreshadowed items, councillors? Any urgent items? Number eight, to consider and order on councillor reports. I'll go clockwise today. Councillor McKay, over to you.
Oh, okay. I attended, I attended the Australia Day Awards Ceremony at Town Hall, which was fabulous and lovely and I think brought a tear to many an eye in the audience, seeing the, all the awards receiv, the recipient. I apologize. I didn't push my, my button. I attended the Australia Day Awards Ceremony, which was fabulous on the evening before Australia Day here where people received their citizenship, but also our municipal awards recipients received their awards. And there was many, a tear in many an eye. It was quite moving, the whole event, seeing people gathered around. Also, the Australia Day Breakfast at Nia District, which, in Nia West Park, which was attended by the most people ever, which was fabulous. And then an event later on in the park. I can't exactly remember the name of that event. That was wonderful. Also, the Nia District Action Group meeting and the Boundary Bend meeting later on in the month. And just a couple of days ago, on Sunday, the art gallery opening, which was wonderful, of Nikita Moore's work and also two artists from over the river. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Jeffrey?
Nothing to report today. Thank you.
Councillor McKay, you have a microphone, please. Thank you. Councillor Moore?
Very brief report this time around. As councillor McKay, the art gallery opening of the new exhibition there, local, local artists there. Australia Day Awards at Lake Bogar, which was very well attended and by, by fairly very good crowd. And Colty with the councillor in Monangatang on the 16th last week. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Young?
25th of January.
Microphone, please, councillor.
Microphone, please.
So you see, Melly meeting and people have probably noticed that they've now advertised for an assistant to start. So we'll have two staff members and they've got lots and lots of registrations. So a lot happening. The 26th, which was Australia Day, I went to the Beverford District breakfast. Then I was on leave during that period for about a fortnight. But I attended Colty with the councillor at the Monangatang Hotel last Friday and also went to the opening of the art gallery on Saturday afternoon with Liz Maddie and Verity Osmond's exhibitions and also Nikita Moore. So it was a great attended day and it was, yeah, well attended. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Young. And for me, quite a long list, so I'll just pick out a couple of things. Sharon did tell me that the best part of being the mayor was the citizenship ceremonies and I would have to agree with that to see the joy on the faces of the people receiving their citizenship. Some of them, a particularly long journey to get to that point was certainly put a tear in my eye and made me reflect on what it means to be an Australian citizen. So that was, yeah, extremely, extremely moving and, and a great way to celebrate the, the couple of days over, over Australia Day, including the Shared Connections event, which, which was also a great event for Swan Hill. A number of presentations of school leader badges over the last few weeks. So kids are back at school and they're pretty excited to be getting their, their leader badges for, for school captains and house captains and whatnot. And they love the mayor coming in his, in his robes and chains as well. I think that's pretty cool. So that was, that's good. And the, the one of extreme note is that I did compete in the Riverside Try, unlike councillor Moore this year, although he has shown me up in, in many other years. And I did complete the five kilometer run, so I'm pretty happy about that. So that completes my report for this month. So I just need to jump on. We've got no in-camera items.
Sir?
If anyone wants to talk about the in-camera minutes.
Oh, did anyone want to talk about the, the Audit and Risk Committee in camera? If we, if, if you do, we need to move into camera. If not, I will declare the meeting closed at 3:09pm. Thank you.